Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Present for the record, school committee woman Denise Hurst and school committee men Norman Roland are representing the school committee at the Mass Association of School Committees Conference, so they are out of town. We're also joined by our new school representative. Put your hands together for Cassandra Velez. She has that wave down to her T. Can we all please rise for a moment of silence and then to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I should also mention that Cassandra Velez is representing Duggan Academy, which is the first. So she's making history. We'll now go to Section 2, the approval of minutes for October 5th, 2017, regular school committee meeting. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, is a motion on the floor. Motion by Mr. Collins, or second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Aye's have it, thank you very much. Section 3, items requiring a vote of the school committee. A is to approve the City of Springfield High School diploma for Christopher Colburn. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a memo in your packet explaining this. Christopher has graduated, met all the requirements, and has passed the MCAS. Dr. Johnson has approved the transcript, and I'm recommending approval to give him a full diploma.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
No motion.
Motion by Ms. Gresham, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes?
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. O'Beah, absent. Mrs. Pierce, absent. Tony Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations, Mr. Colburn. B is to approve Putnam, a high school, Putnam Vocational Technical Academy. School students to travel to Coney Island, New York City, May 30th, 2018, for a senior class trip, and they will return the same day at 10:00 PM. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's an informational piece in your packet on this, and recommending approval. Putnam's way out in front on this, they're asking for approval early.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
No motion.
Motion by Ms. Gresham, is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Collins. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes?
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. O'Beah, absent. Mrs. Pierce, absent. Tony Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. Now we'll do Section 4, informational discussion items. A is to recognize Julian Washington for exceptional, outstanding performance of his duties as a school traffic supervisor. Superintendent Warwick, please.
This was a neat story, and I think an employee we need to recognize for going above and beyond the call of duty. Maria De Angelatonia and Wyatt Leek from our Transportation Division are here to go through it with us. I'd like to call them up to go through this scenario with us, but it's nice to honor an employee who does exceptional work and goes above and beyond the call.
Yeah, good to see you, Superintendent. On the afternoon of Wednesday, October 18th, Mr. Washington was stationed at his post at State and Homer. In the course of crossing not only our schoolchildren, he was crossing a vice president from American International College. As they proceeded to cross State Street, Mr. Washington had noticed a car traveling that didn't seem to be slowing down or was going to stop. Recognizing this, Mr. Washington prevented the group from crossing State Street, which averted what could have been a tragedy for the city. His quick action in recognizing this potentially saved lives in our city.
How's that? But I'm sure school committee members would like to say a few words before we hear from you, and I'll open it up to the floor.
I would like to say thank you, and we appreciate what you do, because I go down State Street a lot, and that's a busy street. You put yourself in danger, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham.
I'd like to echo Mrs. Gresham's comments, and it is a dangerous job. I've seen more crossing guards have to dive out of the way of uncoming cars, but it's nice that you thought of the safety of the kids rather than yourself and kept them out of harm's way. So, thank you very much for everything.
Mr. Collins? Anyone else? Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy?
Just also, Mr. Washington, thank you very much. You know, my kids go to the Springfield Public Schools, and most days I drive them, and you know, it is dangerous out there. It's crew and army where we are, and they're, you know, every morning, that crossing guard is out there. Every morning, he's keeping the kids safe, and that's what you do, and you know, we can't run the school system without you, and your bravery is really immensely impressive, and we very much appreciate it. So, thank you.
That's why, Mr. Leek.
Thank you, committee. I'd just like to add, Mr. Washington has been with us for about a year and a half. His work ethic is impeccable. He's had some challenges with some health issues with his legs and what have you, but he comes to work each and every day, and we're so grateful and thankful to have him, and we know he needs his legs, because he also serves as a referee as well, so I don't know how he's hobbling up and down the court, but he's getting the job done. But there's times he's come to work, and he just didn't feel it, but he came anyway, and his work ethic is just beyond, and I'm grateful to have him as part of my team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. Thank you, Wyatt. Again, I don't know if you want to say anything before I say something? We're not done yet, hold on. Who's that young lady with you, by the way, back here? Okay, yeah. Superintendent Warwick?
As I drive through the city every day, you see our crossing guards out there in snow, rain, sometimes shoveling out intersections, because they're not shoveled out, going above and beyond the cause, and keeping our kids and our folks safe. So, just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your great work, and I think they're unsung heroes. I think we don't recognize all the great work folks do every day, so thank you very much.
Mr. Washington, I have to say, I always say to all the crossing guards when I go by or beep the horn or thumbs up, you are a special and extra set of eyes and ears for our children and everybody that crosses there, and in this case, you put your life on the line to make sure not only the children, but that vice president of AIC were safe. It's sad at times, the majority of people traversing in the City of Springfield, no matter what creed, color, background, are great, great people, but you just have that small percentage that just, the respect is not there, but it was because of your efforts that no one was injured or even worse. And I know many a times, the word hero is used too loosely, and I know you're a humble and genuine man, but what you did was heroic, and I'm sure that the children and that vice president deeply appreciate it. So, we congratulate you on that, and now the floor is yours. Maria D., appreciate you being here. Mr. Leek, Wyatt. So the floor is yours, Mr. Washington, and we're eager to hear the dissertation you're gonna give us right now.
Wow, you know, I've thought about this. I just want to say thank you, coming from my family. My family moved here back in 1953, the year I was born. I was in my mother's stomach. We came here to Springfield because, at the time, they were noted for having one of the best educational systems in the country, and that's why we came here. And I received that education, I went on to further that education, so I just want to say thank you to Springfield Public School System, because they prepared me for the person that I am today, and I'm dedicated and committed, and that dedication and that commitment was what caused me to be able to react. I mean, I could talk about that for years, you know, I was an athlete, trained athlete, referee, whatever, but at that time, I had to do what was necessary to protect the people that were involved, and I'm really sincerely grateful, grateful for the opportunity to serve the school system that served me, that helped me become the person that I am today. Thank you very much.
That's tremendous. We have a citation for you. We should put that on a commer- you couldn't have summed it up better, but we have Springfield Public Schools, Springfield, Massachusetts, Springfield School Committee, Superintendent of Schools hereby recognize Julian Washington for his exceptional and outstanding performance as a school traffic supervisor. This is presented on the second day of November 2017, signed by myself, Mayor Dominic J. Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and all our school committee members. We are so grateful and thankful for your efforts. Pleasure always seeing you. We'll see you on the basketball court, too.
One more year. My wife told me this is my last.
Thank you so much, sir.
You better listen to her, then.
That's it? Done?
Watch out, he's Flash now. We call him Flash now, so...
Well, we have to save him for the corner of State and Homer, we can't have him out on the basketball court.
Right. Thank you so, so much, and God bless you. Thank you, Maria D. Thank you, Wyatt. Thank you, Mr. Washington. Thank you so much. Okay. We're now gonna go to B to recognize Ben Russell, Springfield Central High School student athlete, for his act of true sportsmanship during a Central and SciTech Long Meadow meet of October 10th, 2017. Superintendent Warwick?
Another great story, from the home of scholars and champions here. One of our student athletes who thought more of doing the right thing than winning a meet where he could have set a record, so I think it's just an absolutely fabulous story. I'd like his principal and coach to come on up and tell us about it, but when I read about it, I said I have to share this with the school committee, and just really proud of this young athlete.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. I'm gonna introduce Coach Rice, he's gonna explain exactly what Ben did, but on behalf of this Central High School, I'd just like to thank you for this opportunity to recognize someone who's very special in our building. Ben does everything that you would want your son or daughter to do. He's got a 4.5 GPA, he's a...
Woo-hoo!
He's a rising senior, he's a junior now, he's already looking at colleges and what to go to, so he's an example, and he's not unique, he's what Springfield athletes, scholar athletes are like, so congratulations, Ben. You make us proud, and I'd like to introduce Coach Rice right now.
And for the viewing audience, that's Mr. Central himself, Principal Tad Tokar.
Good to see you. See you, Mr. Lawrence.
Coach?
Hello, school committee. Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick. I have had the pleasure to have known Ben Russell since his freshman year. I'm also the coach of the high school swim team, and last year, well, ever since Ben came, he's been one of our outstanding swimmers, making Western Mass each and every year that he has swum for us. Last year, as a result of his leadership as a sophomore, we named him as the captain of the team for this upcoming season, not only for swimming, for this year, and he also comes out to run. We have an amazing group of kids, and Ben is kind of the ringleader of these kids, and the interesting thing is I have them all in my APUS history class, and they're all like Ben. Well, not all quite like Ben, but they're all pulling high GPAs as well. So Ben does it in the pool, out on the cross-country field, and also in the classroom. All around, he is a class act. Now, if I can tell you what happened at this meet, in cross-country, everyone starts at once. It's not like swimming or track where you have individual races. It's a mass start. Everyone starts at once. Now, our home course is at Forest Park, it's very hilly, so our times tend to be a little slower on 5K courses. Well, we were at Long Meadow at Turner Park, there are no hills. We were billing this as one of the fastest races we were gonna have all year, and for runners, you want to set that PR, you want to set that personal record. That's what we strive for all year long. And also, to move on to Western Mass, you have to be in the top seven of your team to move on, and Ben is sort of right on the cusp of that. And it was during this event, it was hosted by Long Meadow, and SciTech was also there. While we were running, they go off and run into the woods, and I'm looking at my stopwatch saying, "Well, I know Ben's here somewhere." And then Ben comes jogging out about three or four minutes, you know, well over his time. A SciTech runner stopped in apparently some sort of seizure or some type of medical distress, and without even thinking twice about it, Ben stopped. Ben waited until someone else, an adult, came, and he could have waited a while, because they were out in the woods. So he abandoned his race, he abandoned his chance to get a personal record, he abandoned his chance to move up in the team standings, all for a kid that he didn't even know, and that's the kind of person that Ben Russell is. I'd also like to recognize, his parents are right back there, standing up. They came here as well. And his mother, Bridget, is our swim team booster club chairman as well. And one last note, Mr. Tokar has asked me to put in a plug. Tomorrow at 4 o'clock in Forest Park is the citywide cross-country championship, so if anybody wants to see Ben and others like him in action, 4 o'clock. We have six teams from the city, all competing for the crown, so it'll be a great meet. Supposed to be a nice day, too.
Thank you, Coach Rice. Come on, Ben.
I didn't know I had to say anything.
Just pretend you're running, that's all.
Yeah, right. I didn't think that when I stopped to help one of my fellow runners that I would be here, I don't think I, yeah, I didn't think this would happen. It's a great honor, thank you for recognizing me. I'd like to thank my principal and my coach, and especially my parents. But, you know, in cross-country and swimming, coach encourages us to always do the right thing, whether or not, you know, winning is great, but you know, sportsmanship is the, has the highest importance, and I think, you know, keeping that value throughout your life is, you know, very, yeah, important. Sorry, I didn't know I had to say anything.
Ben, you're doing fine. Now, you're not done yet, anyway, so I'm sure school committee members would like to say a few words, so I'll open up the floor. Barbara, Ms. Gresham?
I want to say thank you for your bravery, because a lot of time when people see other people having some type of medical condition or a medical incident or accident, they run away, because they are afraid, but thank you for your bravery. I'm sure that young man appreciate you, too.
Anyone else?
Sportsmanship is above all else, and it's obviously been ingrained into a set of very loving and caring parents. And they say the apple must fall by the tree, and we're sure you will pass it on to the next generation. It's exactly what our society needs to do, is people care more about other people than people who are athletes. You're a good man.
Thank you, Chris. Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy?
Thanks very much, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Ben. You know, my son goes to Central and is on the cross-country team. I'm sure he was way behind you when you stopped and helped that person, and it was, you know, you hear a lot of things about Springfield, and sometimes there's some negative things that are said, and you saw, you know, Mr. Washington tonight, who basically potentially saved somebody's life, and you, you know, are entering aid to somebody, and it really is, I think, the core of Springfield, you know, there are a lot of really good people here. I think Central High School has got a great climate, and great coaches and principal, and great students, and people like yourself. So, I think we're here to just say thank you, you know, for your bravery that day, thank you for your service to a person who was in need, and, you know, you represent what is best about Springfield, and we really appreciate it.
Nice job, Mayor. Velez, I know you want to say something, we love to hear from you.
Also, what I want to say, thank you as a student, you know, and someone who had played sports, I could definitely relate of wanting to win, but you really did take a lot to stop and help someone out, even if you didn't have to, but you did. It was the right thing, and, you know, couldn't thank you more for that for someone, you know, could have passed out or anything could have happened in the woods, you were there. You know, it took a lot for you to stop your, it was your race, and so I want to say thank you.
Nice job, Sean. Superintendent Warwick, before...
Yeah, just so proud of you, Ben. You exemplify everything Springfield's all about, and just incredible. Always proud of the team at Central, they do a great job. Tad and the teachers and coaches are incredible. But I think we also have to commend your parents, because I would say they have done a heck of a job raising you, so thank you.
Ben, you set a fine example, and I can see how proud your mom and dad are there, and not surprised, and also Coach Rice and Principal Tokars. We live, we seem to live, not all, but we seem to live in the me, 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 I generation. You showed very humbly and very genuinely that instincts, this was the right thing to do, and you put yourself in a position where it's not me, 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 I, I, I. Someone was in trouble, someone needed help, and as I think Ms. Gresham and Mr. Collins alluded to, many a times, people, unfortunately these days, some want to look the other way. You didn't. That's a true sign, not only of outstanding character, but a leader in leadership. So we are all so proud of you, and we have a citation by the Springfield Public Schools, Springfield, Massachusetts, Springfield School Committee Superintendent of Schools hereby recognizes Benjamin Russell for his act of selfishness and true sportsmanship on October 10th, 2017. This is presented on the second day of November 2017, signed by myself, Mayor Dominic J. Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and all the school committee members. We are honored to give this to you tonight. And for the record, even in my playing days in high school and college, I hated running. Got a great young, great young man here.
Thank you.
Great young man.
Great job.
Hey, good luck, good luck tomorrow, too. Break that record, what do you call it? The personal record, PR, okay. And thanks on your history stuff, too. Central, the home of scholars and champions, proven out again. Thank you so much. That was very nice. Okay, C is to recognize Springfield Public Schools Office of Business and Financial Services for receiving the Association of School Business Officials International Mysterious Budget Award for the eighth consecutive year. On the city side, we're a little behind you, Pat, I think we have five or six, but you're at the eighth, but you came out of the city side, so we...
It's very well.
Okay, good. Superintendent Warwick?
Seems to be an annual event, but our finance department under Pat Roach has just done an outstanding job with a very, very complex budget, and more complex actually with the Empower Schools. There's a lot of extra work in doing budgets for each individual school and then the overall district as a whole. But every time I meet with the folks from Empower Schools, they rave about the services of Pat and his department, and how he's not only able to handle the entire budget for the school system so well, but actually give them accurate accounting at a very tough individual school level, that I would suggest most of the business managers in the Commonwealth couldn't come close to doing. So, he's done an incredible job, his team has done an incredible job. They earn this award every year, and we're very fortunate to have a leader like Pat and a team that he's assembled here in the City of Springfield, because he's made a big difference in, you know, managing a really tough budget, getting everything out of it, because, you know, we've had to make some tough decisions over the past few years, but it's so much more effective when you're making it based on really tight calculations and really good analysis. So we're getting the best bang for our dollar in Springfield, and we really are, so congratulations to Pat and his team. We have the eighth rendition of this award for you, so I'd like you to come on up.
Come on, everybody, come on up here. Pat would like to say something, and school committee members might want to say something too, about your whole team.
Yeah, thank you. It's a really collaborative effort in the district led by the superintendent, and really, I have a really hard-working team, and I just want to recognize John Johnson, Alex Mascaro, and Mikey. They're the ones who do all the work behind the scenes, and so they're the ones who really lay it on the line every day, and I want to thank them.
Any comments from school committee members?
Yes, I would just like to say thank you to Pat and his team for all the work that they do, and they're always accessible. I can call them up and ask a question, and they're right there, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Gresham, anybody else?
I know we're gonna hear the budget.
You know, it gets commonplace, the awards, and you could almost sit back and go, "Yeah, yeah, it's gonna happen every year," but you guys earn it. Every, same every year. Your job gets tougher every year, and every year you rise to the occasion again. I guess we're gonna keep testing you, and thank you for all the hard work and everything you guys do. The system doesn't run without a good, sound financial barrier.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy?
As the mayor said, you know, we've seen, like, every year we're here, and you guys are getting awards, and, you know, a lot of times when I'm in groups of other people, people talk about the Springfield School Department budget, and I said, "Do you know what the Springfield School Department budget is?" And people say, "Oh, it's 30 million, 40 million, you know, 38 million," you know, and they have no idea how big, you know, 450, 460 million dollars, you know, how big that is, and how much of a challenge it is for you guys every year to make sure that the budget is balanced, and to make sure all the money that we can gets to our children and gets to the classroom, so we can't do it without you, and thank you very much.
Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, it's just a pleasure to work with Pat and his team every day. They always deliver, and they go above and beyond the call. I know during budget season, they were in the office late at night, every night, making sure that budget was balanced and everything was figured out, and we made the best strategic decisions with the dollars for our kids. So I just thank you for your great work, and to win a national award like this, the Association of Business Officials, eight years in a row, I think says it all. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Yes, you certainly may, Mr. Budget Chairman.
You know, it's a half a billion dollar corporation, and if you went into the private sector, the budget office that would be standing there would have been the entire group that was filling this room before, and you guys do it with... Ten of the people that do the private sector can do a better job, and the public never sees that. This is one of the biggest corporations in town. A team as small and as expert as yours never gets enough recognition from people outside of the department who don't understand what it is that the young staff and I have to
I think he's set you all up for pay raises now. This is a very complex budget, the Chapter 70, and all the hoops that you have to jump through on the state level, the federal level, the grants, and being able to put this together, and at times, Superintendent Warwick, strategically, some adjustments or cuts have to be made, and we always make sure we never take away from the classroom and the students. So to be, any one of us who are public servants, or they're appointed, or elected officials, you know, we don't mind the constructive criticism, but sometimes the naysayers and the slings and arrows, and it might not be sexy what you do, but it's important behind the scenes for what we do, and to be recognized from an outside source, not once, not twice, not four, six, eight times, eight years in a row, is quite a testament to the talent that we have here in our school department. Pat, and your team. Pat and your team, people take the time. We're all guilty of criticizing. It's always important to take the time to commend and to say thank you very much. So, we have a official... You got like a framed thing here. Come on down. It says here, Association of School Business Officials International. Matorious Budget Award is presented to Springfield Public Schools for excellence in preparation and issuance of its school system budget. This goes from fiscal year 2010 all the way now to fiscal year 2018. Congratulations. Thank you so much, Pat. Thank you.
Congratulations, Pat. Thanks. Congratulations, Mike. Thanks. Congratulations. Thanks.
You got any checks on you? Yeah, I know. Very good. We'll now move to D. It's the annual data review of the MCAS. Superintendent Warwick, please, and Mr. Foster, AKA Stats.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, this past year in grades three to eight, for the first time in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we gave the MCAS II. It was a different addition of the MCAS and really a completely different test based on a completely different set of standards. So, this report is a lot more complex than what we've given you in past years. And over the last three years, we've given several different tests. We've given the MCAS, the original. We gave PARK for a few years and now the MCAS II. The MCAS II has a completely different set of metrics and completely different categories than the other testing systems we were using in the past. So, for our staff, about a week ago, little over a week ago, we actually got from the Department of Education, all the new metrics they were going to use and the explanation of all those metrics that we've since presented to our staff and to our principals so that they can present to the teachers and parents. But I think before we present the results, we have to explain the new system to you. So, Paul is going to give you a quick overview of the entire new system where we used to go by CPI, now there's scaled scores. All the accountability levels are different. So, it's a different, completely different system and a completely different scoring system. So, Paul's going to give you a quick review of the new system and then we'll walk through the data.
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul.
So, you'll notice this does not look like our normal slides. So, we decided for the purposes of presenting this to you, we'd go right to Desi's slides. So, these are actually the slides that were put together by the department to explain the new system. Just a quick reminder, I believe we've shared this with you previously, with this new year of switching to the MCAS II or what the state's calling the Next Generation MCAS, they're using this 2017 data as the new baseline. And so, there's no accountability data that was released. So, previously when we'd come to you with the annual report of data, there would be PPI and percentiles and accountability levels and none of that's changing and none of that's been released this year because 2017 is the new baseline. So, quickly on what is the Next Generation MCAS? And you've heard about this and there's been a lot of talk about this over time, but it's replacing the 20-year-old MCAS assessment, much like the PARK assessment that we've tried out for a couple of years, focused on critical thinking, application of knowledge. The state is also saying it's a clear indicator of college readiness. So, one of the things the state's been talking about is the percentage of students statewide who, when they get to the college level, still need remedial coursework. And so, one of the state's goals with the Next Generation MCAS is to ensure that the assessment is measuring whether kids are ready for college. You know that we're moving to an online assessment and when I talk about this Next Generation Assessment tonight and when the superintendent shares the data, understand that the Next Generation Assessment for now is grades three to eight. We will have one more year of the old assessment, the old MCAS in the 10th grade, and then we'll move to a Next Generation Assessment in the 10th grade. Just an update on the computer-based testing last year, so the 2017 data, about 60% of students in grade three to eight statewide took the test online. In Springfield, nearly all of our fourth graders and a portion of our eighth graders took the test online last year. One thing that the state did with the data, it's not visible in the data, you can't see it, but on the backend, they made sure to equate the data so that there's no difference between the results for students who took the test online versus paper. So, this is what's the most important thing for you to know and the most important thing for our parents to know because parents are going to start getting parent guardian reports over the next week. They're going to be sent home from schools with their students' results on the MCAS from last year and they're going to look very different. They have different scores and so one of the superintendent alluded to us educating our staff so that when those parents call and say, hey, I don't understand what this number means, we want to make sure that our staff are ready to answer those questions. So, the first thing, this will look familiar. On the old MCAS, we had four performance levels. Students went from advanced to warning failing and the threshold was to meet proficiency. So, now the state has changed that. With the Next Generation MCAS, it's no longer the language of proficiency, it's now the language of expectations. And you'll see that it's still four levels, going from not meeting expectations to exceeding expectations and the threshold that we're shooting for is to get our students to that meet expectations level. One of the things the state has been very clear about is you cannot, it's a little confusing because it's four levels and now there's four levels. You cannot compare percent proficient on the old MCAS to percent meets expectations on the new MCAS. And there's a few slides on this in a moment, but the state has upped the level of rigor and the threshold for meeting expectations is a higher level than the previous threshold of being proficient. So, this is what the top half of the parent guardian report looks like. I apologize, some of that is a little bit small, but one of the things you should see, the old MCAS, we had a scaled score that was between 200 and 280. Now, we're moving to a scaled score that is between 400, I'm sorry, 440 and 560. I cannot answer the question about why it starts at 440 because I have no idea. But the threshold is 440 to 560. The most important number to know is 500. If a student scores 500 or higher, that means they're meeting expectations on the Next Generation MCAS. And so, what our parents are going to receive is a report that looks like this. You see the little triangle on this example shows that this particular student scored a 541. That constitutes exceeding expectations. And on the report, what the parents get, they're going to receive their score, or I should say their child's score, and then the average score for their school, for Springfield and for the state. And then on the bottom of that report, they're going to get a little more detail and this is a little different than what they got with the old MCAS. This is an example from math, but for the different strands of mathematics, they get a little bit of detail about how many points their student earned relative to the number of points possible. And so, you can see for this, you know, this example student, operations and algebraic thinking, the student got, you know, seven out of 10 possible points, whereas numbers and operations and base ten, they got 10 of 10. It's meant to inform parents about where their child's weaknesses are when it comes to math or ELA. So, this is, the next couple of slides are really Desi's kind of recommendations about how we message this to families. The first bullet I've already alluded to, the new standard for meeting expectations is a more rigorous standard than the old standard for reaching proficient. So, one of the likely questions from some families will be, my child scored proficient last year. This year, I got a report that said they partially met expectations. Did they do worse? Did they learn less? And the answer is no, or certainly it's at least not necessarily because that met expectations is a higher standard. So, interpreting the results, first bullet, I think I've already hit this one, it does not mean students learned less. 2017 is our baseline year of a new assessment. And in terms of the standard setting, one of the things that is, you know, these standards were set by Massachusetts teachers. So, they got together, teachers by grade level, to think about what is the college-ready level of achievement a student needs and that's where they set the threshold of meet So, this is going to be a little, it's a little data-y. So, one of the things that's important to know also about the change from the old MCAS to the new MCAS, you don't need to look at this in close detail. What you need to see is those squiggly lines, they're sort of all over the place. What that tells you is on the old MCAS, depending on the grade level or subject, and this is state, I should say, this is statewide data, this is not Springfield data, this is statewide data. And on the old MCAS, the percent of students who scored advanced or proficient was all over the place, depending on the grade level or subject. It wasn't consistent, which led to, you know, could lead to weird interpretation questions because you could say, well, 60% of students were proficient in the third grade and all of a sudden only 45% were proficient in the fourth grade. You know, did 15% of the students learn less? Not necessarily. And that has to do with how they normed the former test. So, with the new MCAS, the Next Generation MCAS, this is the statewide data. So, this is what the actual 2017 data looks like. And what you'll see is that about 50% of students, about 48, 49 generally, in each grade level, scored meeting or exceeding expectations. So, they deliberately did vertical alignment because with the new Next Generation MCAS, they wanted you to be able to make comparisons between grade level so that you would know that, okay, if students went from 50% of students proficient in third grade and then when those students went on to fourth grade and 60%, I shouldn't say proficient, met expectations, when they get to fourth grade, that actually means something with the Next Generation MCAS, whereas it really didn't with the old MCAS. Now, the other thing that is a little bit surprising when you look at this is we know that Massachusetts, when we take the NAEP, the National Assessment, has been number one in achievement for the last several years. And so, one of the really obvious questions is how come only 50% of our students are meeting expectations if we're number one in the country? And so, the explanation that Desi is offering with regard to how they normed the test, this, the NAEP, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, is given in grade four and eight. And this is Massachusetts' most recent results on the NAEP. And what you can see is about 50% of students on the NAEP, the National Assessment, scored as proficient. And that was good enough to be number one in the country. And so, essentially what Desi is saying is they attempted to norm and scale the Next Generation MCAS to match the NAEP so that about 50% of students are proficient on NAEP, about 50% of students met expectations on the Next Generation MCAS. And there's a couple of websites the state's put out there relative to helping parents understand, there's a parent guide as well as a parent page. And so, that's the quick version of the changes to the MCAS. I don't know if there's any questions before the superintendent dives into the data.
School committee members, any? Ms. Gresham?
Is it based on the Every Student Succeed Act? Is this based on that?
It isn't directly.
No.
What will happen is because of the Every Student Succeeds Act, the state is formulating a new accountability system, they're required to based on the new law. And the new accountability system will use the Next Generation MCAS data. And what the state is saying is that the 2017 data that the superintendent's about to share will be our baseline for the new accountability system going forward.
So, it won't account against the district in any way?
The 2017 data does not account.
Against.
Essentially, they're saying it's baseline, it doesn't count. That's why they're not doing accountability this year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Mr. Collins?
Why do you intentionally want a test so that only half the students come out as meeting expectations? It would seem that the logical outcome, and that's statewide, that's not restricted, would seem that the logical outcome statewide is going to be that more schools are going to be identified as failing or struggling by norming the test and so, is that a fair assumption or a fair outcome that would come from this?
It could, although the way that the accountability system has changed historically...
They basically name, any school that's in the bottom 20% are the ones that they're naming level three in the old system. Now, the new system, they're going to change all the leveling and all of that, but in the old system, it was based on the percentage. So, even if they lower, even if they increase the rigor of the test and dropped the percent of kids meet expectations to 50%, the accountability is really a function of where our schools rank relative to the other schools in the state. And so, if you're in the bottom 20%, that's when you're getting identified.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Superintendent?
I'll take it from you. Stats? We'll go through the testing data with you and again, it's in a little different format. Started with our strategic plan as we always do. We upgraded this strategic plan this year. Some overview data, Springfield's the second-largest district in New England. Fifty-eight schools, including nine alternative schools. 25,633 students. 20.8% in special education. 15.6% English language learners. 74.3% economically disadvantaged. That's a direct cert designation and with whole Leok, we're at the highest level in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with that. We have 2,280 Unit A members and almost 5,000 employees in the city. We're the third-largest employer in western Massachusetts. Citywide unemployment rate of 6.9%. The state sits at about 3.7%. And our annual budget last year, well, for this year is $476 million with all funds accounted for. So, now as we walk through the data, we have this piece set up as in the past because the academic data isn't in here. So, as you follow across, we're showing years 2011, 12 to the current year. On the first category, the dropout rate, one of our most important indicators, that data for this year isn't in yet, as you know, we always get that in January. So, we're showing you 12 through 15, 16. And as you can see in Springfield, we cut the dropout rate to less than 50% of what it was five years ago. So, we're very, very proud of that data. And it looks very, very positive that we're trending in a direction of another improvement again this year when the data comes out. Student attendance, as you can track across the five years, our attendance has improved. This past year, we had a little dip in attendance along with chronically, severely chronically absent and truancy, a little blip up in those categories. Quite honestly, DCF hasn't been able to support us with the chronic attendance cases and the courts are kind of snowed under. So, you can see those categories went up slightly, but over the last five years, we have significant improvement in those areas. Overall, the graduation rate, another piece of huge success for us, started out at 56.6%. It's up to 68.8% and we believe this year's data is going to trend upward yet again. So, we're really proud, proud of that data. SAT participation, you can see it's really way up over the years. Advanced placement, the number of kids in advancement placement getting qualifying scores, nice trend of improvement over the years, a little downward trend this last year. And exams taken, and Central was here tonight, but they won an award last year for the highest number of minority students in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts taking AP courses. So, it shows you the concentration and the improvement in that arena. Staff attendance, we called out some things this year so you could actually see the sick time because that's been a little bone of contention in the past. So, teacher attendance excluding long-term leaves, you can see it's up and it's up to 96.4%. Paraprofessional attendance excluding long-term leave, 93.6%, down a little bit as compared to last year. Teachers' sick time, this excludes long-term leaves and any other kind of leaves, 3.3%. And you can see there's been a pretty significant improvement in that arena. And the parasick time over the last five years has also improved at 4.8%. We've worked hard in the contracts on that. School climate and culture, you can see drastic improvements in every area. In-school suspensions going from 4,400 down to 1,233. Out-of-school suspensions down significantly. Arrests are a fraction of what they once were, as you can see, and bullying incidents are way down in a fraction of what they were. So, overall, in the climate and culture area, you can see very, very positive signs. Now, with a new accountability system, in this chart, you're going to see three different testing systems that we'll try to explain to you. The first three columns, as you can see in grades three to eight, are the old MCAS. The next two columns, 14, 15, 15 and 16, are MCAS, PARK. And at 15, 16, it was all PARK at these grade levels. And then 2016, 17, you can see the new categories in there. So, let me walk you across. As you go across, academic proficiency in English language arts, you can see there's no longer academic proficiency in the new test, so nothing is in there for this year. As you can see, over the five years previous to this year, we had really significant gains, better gains than were experienced in the state and went up from 36 to 43% in those categories, which was a significant gain while taking a PARK, which was a more difficult test, more rigorous test. See the same trend in mathematics. This year in science, the scoring didn't change and we did have science scores this year and you can see how that has moved across each year. Then the next category, CPI, you can see the CPI, we have still CPI as a category in science. On the new test, it's going to be scale score, but science has stayed the same for now. And you can see that we've had a nice gain in science over the years. Student growth percentile, this compares a student to students with like history in the past and how they performed after a year of academic instruction. You can follow it across. In ELA, we started at 38, we're now at 45%. It's very flat. Math's still at 36%. Now, the new categories that Paul was talking about, percent meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA, you can see that the first year out on this test, we're at 26% in ELA, 23% in math. The new scaled score is going to be instead of CPI, the old CPI calculation. You can see our average score in ELA is 487.4 and the average in math is 485.9. You can see our average score in ELA is 487.4, and the average in math is 485.9. Grade 10 test stayed the same. They're going to, there's one more MCAS in grade 10. Same trend, you can see English language arts has gone up over the years. This past year, we had a little decline up in math this past year, and pretty flat over the years. But science and technology, we, we had a really strong year this year, went, went up significantly. And you can see we're 27 to 34% on that, relative to academic proficiency. CPI, again, the trend is up over the four-year period, five-year period, excuse me. And the CPI is, is again up significantly for this year in science. Student growth percentile, can see that it's been up and down, but right, right around 40%. It went down from 44% some years back. Math is up from 38 to 44%. So I, I know it's a complex read, but it was three different tests, and that's a good framework for where we're at right now. Next slide, grade 10 ELA MCAS CPI by subgroups. Remember, the grade 10 test has the CPI calculations here, and it shows you across in the different subgroups. And one thing I want you to really notice here is that, in a system that has the highest poverty rate in Massachusetts, we no longer, over the years, we've had really drastic gains in our subgroups, and we're performing almost right at the state average in those subgroups, even though we have the highest poverty rate in the state. See, African-American group, you can see, is almost right at the state average. And the Hispanic-Latino group, where we had drastic gains over the years, flattened out a little this year in ELL, sped as even. But to have our subgroups performing at the state level with our poverty rate is an incredible accomplishment. Same profile in mathematics, little more differentiation there, but you can see the, how it shook out across the, across the different subgroups. And again, I think the past few years, we've had drastic increases overall and in the subgroup, so a little flatter this year. But overall, you can see the categories improve. We've clearly narrowed that gap, which was our goal all along. Grade five, science and technology test. Again, as you go across, you can see that there is no gap between us and, and the state and these subgroups, which is very encouraging, given the poverty level here. You can see in our African-American subgroup, we're actually scoring higher than the state average, which is incredible. Hispanic-Latino, ELL, same thing. And sped has improved also, and overall, we've made, we definitely narrowed the gap. Grade eight, similar profile, we've narrowed the gap. You can see that there's improvements in all the different subgroups in, in mathematics there. And the high school group, very, very positive gains this year in mathematics going across at every level. And again, again, good, good gap narrowing pieces there. Grade five, eight, and 10, science and technology, proficient or higher. These are only the kids in proficient, as you can see, there's been an increase there from last year. The next slide, you're going to see the, the new testing profile, which Paul was discussing earlier. You can see in the, in the state to the right, and in SPS to the left. At the state level, you had 7% of the kids in that exceeds expectations category. In, in Springfield, we had two. 42% in meets expectations, Springfield, we had 24. 41% in partially meets, Springfield, we have 52. 10% at the not meeting expectation, in Springfield, we had 22. A similar profile to every urban school system in the Commonwealth. Same comparison for math, reads the same way with the new categories. And again, we're establishing a baseline with this new test, with these new categories. Then if you read across by grade level, you can see a similar plot to this. The one thing you'll notice as you're going across the grade levels is that our grades three, four, and five students continue to perform better than our middle school students, and, and that continued with this new test. Now, to your far right in blue is the old test. And as you can see, 73% of the kids in the old test in ELA were in the top-two category. So it's a drastic difference across the state on who's falling in those categories. But they, they mean completely different things, and this is a college and career readiness test, not a high school completion test. Same, same kind of plot for mathematics, follows the same trend, stronger performance in, in ELA than mathematics. And of course, the old test in grade 10, the results were, were much higher. Now, scaled scores, you're going to see instead of CPI, this shows you Springfield to the left, and at every grade level, the state where they're at to the right. And like every other urban, we're performing under, under the state at this juncture. What you can see is, in this trend also, is that the elementary grades' performance is higher than the, the middle school grades on this test, and this is grades three to eight. Same, same profile for math, same, stronger at the elementary than the middle school, and you can see the overall. And everything in the future, instead of CPI, you're going to see these new scaled scores. The next chart is the old category for student growth percentile, and it shows you over the years where we're at. In ELA, starting in '12, we started at 39. Now, overall, we're at 44. And in math, 36. And now, we're at 37. So we made some growth there. Excuse me, I'm battling a pretty bad call tonight, so excuse my voice. Student growth percentile across the grades, to show you where it was at across the grades, some highlights here. Obviously, grade five was particularly strong. And grade eight really shot up. Grade seven, there was some positive gains too. But grade eight really shot up in ELA in student growth percentile. We're really pleased about that. Math, you can see, similar profile. Grade eight stronger, again, the elementary grades stronger. And then about the same in grade 10, because remember, that, that's reflective of the old Subgroup analysis with the ELA. And again, this is all reflective of the new test this year. And you can see how the subgroups did. You can see pretty good gains in, in African-American, Hispanic, Latino. Little drop in ELL, but we had a drastic gain the last several years in ELL. In fact, our most significant gains. So little drop off from there, a little drop off in sped. And you can see the overall is around the same. In math, you can follow it across also, and again, compares us with the state. Little drop off in some of the areas this year. After significant years of gains, we had five straight years in the subgroups of better gains than were experienced in the rest of the state. In fact, our most significant gains have been in the subgroups. Grade 10 ELA MCAS, student growth percentile, you can see in grade 10 this year, after several years of gains, the student growth piece flattened out a little bit, and we're a little bit down. In math, you can see in certain subgroups, we're up, like African-American, Hispanic-Latino, and down a little bit in ELL and sped. And overall, up just a little bit. I think one thing in this testing piece, we took a good look at how, how communities fared across the state. And you've read so much about the impact of poverty on, on, on testing performance, and there's a high correlation between poverty and testing performance. We took a look at where we're at poverty-wise, as compared to the schools in the Commonwealth with the greatest level of poverty. And you, you can see we're, we're at 74.3%. Holyoke is at 75%. They're the only other community in the Commonwealth that really compares to us from a poverty rate. The only other one over 70 was, was Lawrence. But you can see that Fall River, New Bedford, South Bridge, which has been taken over by the state, like Holyoke, is actually sitting down at 67%. And the poverty level through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is drastically different. It's down at 30%. So it, it shows you the piece there. When the test came out, the commissioner, acting commissioner drew a correlation comparing the results in Holyoke and Springfield. And as you can see, Springfield fared a lot better than Holyoke, with 26% of our kids in the top-two categories, as compared to only 14% in Holyoke. And in math, with 23% in the top-two categories, as compared to 10%. So this is the only community that actually compares to us from a poverty standpoint. As you can see, our results were nothing like Holyoke's. Same thing on the next slide, with average scale score. Our scores are almost 10 points above Holyoke, even though our poverty rate is about the same. 487.4 to 479, and 485.9 to 475.7 in mathematics. So coming out of the gate, we were a lot closer to the schools, even with much lower poverty rates. But the only school with the same poverty rate as ours, as opposed to what the commissioner put in the paper, it's a very, very different result that, that, that happened here. Now, following student attendance, going across, as we talked about earlier, we had several years of gains. We had a little drop off last year. Same thing with truancy, same profile, a lot of years of gains, we're way better than when we started. But a little uptick last year, and we're working with, with the state agencies on that. The next slide, you're going to see the four-year cohort graduation rate, going back from 2006, when it was 51.2% to, to last year, which was 68.8%. So you see a drastic increase there. Next slide, you can see the graduation rate by schools. And some of our schools have had significant improvements, I wanted to call it out. You can see the overall, a significant increase from 52.1 to 68.8. But schools like Commerce that started at 30.1 are now 58.2. SciTech, 36.3, 58.6 now. Putnam, 60.5, 92.6 on the graduation rate. So drastic increases across the board on the, on the four-year cohort graduation rate in all of our comprehensive schools. The next slide, you can see the number of dropouts. This is an important number for us. It's probably our most important number. And as you can see, it's moved down drastically from 737 in 2009, 10 to 343 this past year. And then the dropout rates by schools. Again, overall, we started at 10%, it's 4.9%. More than a 50% decrease in, in the overall dropout rate. But you can see great news at different schools, like SciTech, for example, started 11.6, it's down to 4.3%. Incredible improvement. Commerce, 13.6, down to 8%. Renaissance is sitting at only 1%. Putnam started at 5.1, is down to 0.8%. So significant improvements across all of the major high schools in that. The AP courses, we talked about this before, but you can see, we have a lot more students participating in AP courses than we ever had. And again, and we have the highest concentration of minority students actually taking AP courses at Central and in several of our other schools than any other school system in the Commonwealth. The AP exams for a qualifying score, you can see the trend is up over the years. Bullying incidents, we've, we've cut that down to a fraction of what it once was. You can see the drastic decline there. All the culture, climate issues, out-of-school suspensions, drastically down from what they once were. Total number of arrests in the schools, sometimes, you know, we'll get groups saying that there's a lot of arrests being made in Springfield. You can see the arrests are a fraction of what they once were. I think the schools are safer than they've ever been before. Another thing we're very proud of, we created ninth-grade academies to help students with that transition from middle school to high school. And over the last few years, we've been able to decrease that ninth-grade retention rate. The fact of the matter is, we were losing a lot of kids in ninth grade. They were never getting past ninth grade. They were being retained several times in ninth grade. So you can see that's down over the years, and that's a, a large part of the success we've had in the graduation rate. Those kids are moving up, taking the 10th grade test quicker, you know, sooner, and some struggling kids are taking it. You know, I think that's contributed to the flattening of the 10th grade scores overall. But they're matriculating through, and they're actually passing and graduating. And that's, that's what's really important here. So really proud of this, reducing this retention rate. Then we had some summary highlights to just go over. The, in ELA, the drop in Springfield was less when you went from one test to the other overall, compared to the state in math, same thing. Science, we had a really good year, not only overall, the scores went up, but it increased for, for every one of our subgroups. Science proficiency, again, increased at every grade level. Grade five ELA and math, our grade five scores were particularly great. And again, experienced by all those subgroups, and exceeding the growth for those subgroups across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In grade eight, ELA growth, a real strong indicator this year. The ELA growth for our kids in grade eight, significant improvement. And again, experienced by all the subgroups, which is so important. Again, our, another highlight, our four-year cohort rate being way up. And I, I think we're trending to, to have more success with that this year. The dropout rate down, out-of-school suspensions have decreased significantly, arrests are way down. And our advanced placement courses are, you know, the penetration rate is much more significant. And again, experienced by all of our students, including our, our minority students. And the grade nine retention rate decreasing it by, from 20 to 15%. Now, in your appendix, you can see, we've broken out the results for every school in Springfield, showing you the average scaled score for the school, percent in the meets, exceeds, and the percent, median student growth percentile. In ELA, math and science, so as you go through the chart, you can take a look at how each school fared. It's a little different story at every school, there's some ups and downs, but we gave you the, the overall trend. I think to, a point to reemphasize, a reset year, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts were establishing a new baseline. Last year, we had great success increasing the Level One schools. There was no change in accountability levels this year, because it's a reset year. So that, that just isn't part of the equation this year. So drastic changes in the testing system. I think we have a new baseline, and clearly, like every other school system in the Commonwealth, we have an extremely rigorous test that's been normed and scored in a very, if you will, a harsh manner, that's projecting Massachusetts to be only 49% proficient in ELA in math, and 40, and 48 in math, excuse me, when we know every year, we come in number one on an NAEP test and compete in the top five on the international test. But this was intended to be a college and career readiness test, and it gives us a baseline where we can continue to improve the curriculum and move to make improvements in every school on those scores. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Wark. Any questions or comments? Ms. Gresham?
Superintendent, CPI measures how the students are learning, correct?
CPI is, is, it's a comprehensive performance index. So it gives you an index score that you can average overall for a building that I think was the most accurate measure, if you were determining, like, if you're trying to show growth at a school, it's more accurate than going in the performance categories, because there's four categories. But it's a measure of overall performance on the test. It's an index.
But does it measure how they're learning?
It measures for each student, what their score was. And when you average it for the building, it gives you their average score.
Okay. So what's happening with our middle schools, though?
The middle school performance for the last several years, here in, in all the urbans in the Commonwealth, has been lower, there's no question. This year, we experienced a pretty significant increase in student growth percentile at the middle school level. As you know, we didn't have CPI at the middle school level this year, because it was the new test. So there was, in eighth grade especially, but seventh grade also, there was a bump-up. Sixth grade remains a concern, and it's something we're going to continue to have to work on. And then it has, that's been a trend for years, Mrs. Gresham.
Okay. Do we have any students dual enrollment?
We have a lot of students in dual enrollment. We have a major agreement with AIC, with STIC, with Westfield State. And STIC's are, are going to expand it citywide, but we have a lot of students in dual enrollment courses.
Can I get a number?
Sure.
As to how many students we have?
Sure.
And then with one other question, on page three, whatever page this is, under district performance, for the reading for 10th grade, it dropped, right?
Yes. Yep.
Why do we?
I, I think that we're testing a lot more students than we used to, because the retention rate is so far down, and we had a slight decrease. But that's after four years of significant increases, yeah. So we had a little leveling off.
But still, it dropped, right?
Dropped a little bit, yep. But not if you compare it to the past five years, it's up in every area.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Any other questions or comments? I just have to say that the tests, obviously, are very rigorous, and that's fine. But the standards get, continue to be changed almost every year.
Yeah, and these were new standards this year, too. I mean, they had, they had changed them, they had changed with the Common Core, and then Massachusetts decided to change their standards. So again, a youngster in sixth grade is being tested on standards that they probably weren't taught in the elementary schools. So as we change the tests and the standards, it, it does level out performance, and hence the decline across the Commonwealth.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to get a baseline or continuity. I think it's three years that the tests or the criteria has been changed. And, you know, again, with urban systems, we, we say no to, to no one. We accept everybody that walks through the door on it. So I think that has to be taken in the context. And again, we don't mind the rigorous standards. We want to make sure our kids are able to compete, not only in the United States, but in the world. And I think- compete not only in the United States but in the world, and I think stats, Mr. Foster had indicated that we still are scoring number one in the United States of America as far as the testing. And if you compare, when I look into the data, if you compare some of the subgroups, even with some of the more affluent areas, and certain subgroups' scores, you know, we're able to hold our own moving forward, but we don't stay complacent. We're going to continue to hammer away, and I'm hopeful with DESI and the state that they pick one standard, and then we can really look at a two- or three- or four-year trend to see whether continued progress or if there's been a decline, so you can make the appropriate adjustments from there.
That's what they're promising, Mayor. We hope we establish a baseline like we did in '98 with the first MCAS test, and the first MCAS results as compared to the old Iowa test was much, much lower, very depressed. Same thing here across the entire Commonwealth, and hopefully, with improved curriculum and instruction, we'll make the gains like we did on the old MCAS test and continue to be the highest performing state in the country.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing done, we will now move to reports of standing committees. A is student relation parent concerns. Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B is building and maintenance committee. Thank you, Mr. Collins. C is legislative and contracts committee. I believe that the school committee is a person, is a conference on that. D is curriculum program. Denise, again, she's at the conference. E is budget and finance, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Mr. Collins. F is vocational education committee. I believe that's Norm. G is technology committee. I believe that's Norm, too.
That's me, no.
No, it's, okay, no, thank you. H is school safety committee. Gresham? Okay, thank you very much. Report of the superintendent, Superintendent Warwick.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a flyer in your packet that I think you'll find interesting. In light of what's going on with the infusion of students from Puerto Rico here in the Commonwealth and in Springfield, we decided as a team to create a Springfield Assistance Fund, to help, a student assistance fund with the victims of the hurricane, so we're enrolling a lot of students in school, significantly more than most of the school systems in the Commonwealth, so we can provide some of the extras for the families, you know, clothing supports, uniform supports, you know, winter clothes as they come in towards November from a very warm climate. So creating an opportunity for folks wanting to contribute across the system or across the city to help these families in need. As of today, we've made 202 enrollments here in Springfield, and across the state, the number I was given today was at 550. So you can see, and Holyoke was over 50 the last time I talked. So Springfield and Holyoke have enrolled about half of the entire population in the Commonwealth, so a very high propensity towards coming to Springfield and Holyoke, which some of us expected to some degree. But we've got the students in school, we're providing help for the families, we're embracing these families, and they're becoming part of that, and we're putting them in the neighborhood schools. So we've made sure we have ESOL services, ELL services in every school, so we can serve the kids in their neighborhood schools. So so far, we've had a nice transition for those families, and we're moving them all in. They're coming in under McKinney-Vento. The state is taking a look at it to see if they're going to provide some assistance, either through the feds or at the state level for new students arriving, because as you know, they're all arriving after October 1st. They have to arrive by October 1st for us to get funding next year for them. So all the kids, all these kids have come in after October 1st, so under our funding structure in Massachusetts, we wouldn't get funding for two years. So they have to give us some kind of relief funding to help with this, because it's based on a historical formula, but events like this, they're not going to follow the historical trend, so we're putting in for that funding.
Do they fall under funding for McKinney-Vento?
There's very little funding that comes with McKinney-Vento, unfortunately. We end up paying most of that money, we get very little funding from McKinney-Vento. We're supposed to, but...
Really?
Yeah, very little. They give us a small percentage of the transportation costs, but it's, there's not a lot of funding there. So it's, you know, it's a strain, but we're happy to step up, make sure we take care of these families and these kids, and our teams at every school have stepped up. And there's been a, it hasn't been a concentrated piece, it's pretty much a spread through all the grade levels and through the entire school system. So so far, everything's gone well, we're geared up at pace, we have a lot of bilingual personnel there to meet the families, meet the needs, do the ELL testing, there's any special education, take a look at the special education, any paperwork we can get and get these kids in programs and in schools and right in their own neighborhoods. So so far, everything is moving really well with that, and we're pursuing the funding as a superintendent's association across the state, trying to put heat on DESI and the feds to give us the appropriate funding, so it doesn't strain our already strained resources.
I have to say, Superintendent Warwick, and to our field side team, and to our city team on my end with my chief of staff, Denise Jordan, and Minnie Morel of my office, and much like having that Ben Russell up here from Central, this is the right thing to be done. We've dealt with disasters before, and you always err on the side of compassionately and effectively helping out. These are brothers and sisters in Puerto Rico, these are American citizens. So we'll make sure we track all our costs, and we continue to work from the federal and state level down, and I'm very proud of the school department and our city side, and we've been commended for what we've done to step up. We continue to work with the philanthropic organizations, we continue to work with any and all social service organizations, and we continue to work private or public. These people have been through, our people have been through a very traumatic experience, and we're prepared to deal with this influx, whether it's short-term or it's long-term. I know many from our contacts yearn to go back to the island when it's appropriate time, but this is the right thing to be done, and we will continue to do this and make sure that those families, especially whether young or old, have been through traumatic experiences, will be welcomed here in the city of Springfield. And I appreciate everyone who has stepped up as we continue to meet on this subject, and then hopefully, the federal and state level will come across with the funding to help out our American citizens here. But that's what Springfield's all about, and we will continue to do that. I know it is much appreciated, the efforts, the coordinated efforts that we've put forward, and I appreciate the New North Citizens Council, which has been my conduit, the funnel, to catch everything that comes through here. So we hope for the best in the recovery of Puerto Rico, but in the meantime, Springfield and Superintendent Warwick has given the figures here, 550 in the total state. Of that, we've taken over 200, and Holyoke's taken, has about 50 that have come in. So we don't turn anybody away, especially our American citizens and brothers and sisters in Puerto Rico on it. So, Danny, to you and to everyone else, to the city side, too, and everybody that's been involved in this, we're really very thankful for the caring, compassionate efforts. Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy?
May I just want to echo your comments, Mayor. You know, there's a lot of people from Puerto Rico who are not happy with the recovery efforts that FEMA has engaged in, and, you know, we forget that, as you said, that Puerto Rican folks are American citizens. They fought in Vietnam, they fought in Iraq and Afghanistan, and they defended our country, and I think at a time of trouble for Puerto Rico, we need to step up. And I think, you know, lastly, the newspaper had a pretty good editorial, I can't remember if it was on Mass Live or in the newspaper, that, you know, Springfield and Holyoke, and to a certain extent, Chickaby and Lawrence and other communities are seeing an influx of Puerto Rican kids in our school systems. But, you know, some of the suburban communities that are wealthy communities, Long Meadow East, Long Meadow, Hamden, Wilbraham, many, many, you know, and the list goes on and on, you know, they can't preach to us about our test scores or our, you know, the issues that we're having in our schools unless they step up with some resources and some funding and to assist, you know, in this, in this real tragedy. And, you know, I have a lot of friends and folks in Puerto Rico, and I think it's something like 65 to 70 percent of the country is still without power, there are all kinds of problems with getting clean water. So this is, this is not something that's going to end tomorrow or next week, this is something that is probably going to continue really for the next year and even into the next academic year. So I just really appreciate the superintendent and his staff, you know, for making sure that we accept these students, that we make sure that they get to their neighborhood schools, that they make sure if they're special ed or ELL or that they're, that they're getting the services that they need. And again, I think that, I think some surrounding communities could really help in stepping up with funding and fundraising and volunteer work and donating, whether it's clothes or money or, you know, learning materials. And I hope, and I applaud the Republican for putting that in the paper, and I think it absolutely should happen, you know, we don't do this in a vacuum. As you said, we're, you know, between Holyoke and Springfield, we're taking almost half of these children, and I think other communities in western Massachusetts and around the state need to step up and help us, you know, help these people, these American people who, you know, have fought for our country and have been great patriots in assisting, you know, the challenges that are going to lie ahead, and this is not a situation that is going to be over in six months or eight months or a year. So, thank you, Mayor.
Vice Chair Attorney, any other questions, Mr. Velez? I don't know if you wanted to say anything at all? I don't know if you have any family that's been affected here?
My family from Kewa is actually on the poor side, so I would want to thank for all the help. I feel like we can't forget about them. I definitely do agree, whatever, how you guys manage, you know, to get it done, you should get it done and keep helping out these kids coming in to get, you know, educated and put in schools and don't want them to be forgotten.
Very well put, Ms. Velez, thank you very much. Superintendent Warwick, I know you have more on your report.
I have a few other really quick items. We had a nice visit from ESL teachers from across the world in the South Asia-Pacific region, visited here last week. School committee person, Murphy, and school committee member Denise Hurst and I met with them. We had a wonderful chat, they went to some of our programs at some of our schools, really, really interesting, great folks, and they really enjoyed seeing some of the programs we have with ESL services, because they were ESL teachers from Singapore, Hong Kong, China, Vietnam, Cambodia, Thailand. It was a really neat experience, was nice to have the World Affairs Council bring them out here to Springfield again. We've always had a partnership with them.
They were a good group.
They were a great group, yeah.
They caught the tail end here at City Hall. Yes.
It actually, it really was, and I think we, I know Denise is not here, but I think we have to give some credit to Denise because she really was...
All together, yeah.
The one that really organized this and reached out to other members, you, Mr. Superintendent, and Mayor, and myself, and, you know, I had an opportunity to go and speak, and, you know, it was, these folks were really, really serious about, you know, about education and about education reform and about how to run school departments and how, you know, our electoral system works and how our appointment of superintendents work, and, you know, so it was really, it was, it was very impressive. I enjoyed it very much, and I think we really need to credit to Ms. Hurst for, she had a presentation together, she did a very, an excellent job in welcoming these folks and in helping them to bring back the best practices of education back to the South Pacific, and it was, it was a great experience, and I think we should, we should recognize Ms. Hurst for that. And I also, I know, Mr. Superintendent, you're busy, but I know that Ms. Hurst and Mr. Old Don would really like to go through this packet with you, so if you could carve out a little time, you know, I think we, you know...
I promise them both.
I don't think it's fair that they're not here to be enlightened by this, so I think you should talk to Norm and Denise about that.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy, for that sartorial sarcastic levity. We appreciate that very much. Back to Superintendent Warwick.
Just another piece, there's a nice copy of an article that appeared in the Boston Globe about our empowerment zone, being heralded as a leader across the state, you read. We also...
Can I say a quick thing about that?
Sure, Mayor, sir.
On the empowerment zone, not only are we being looked upon across the Commonwealth as a fine example of what we do well in the public systems, a little flexibility of charter and working with the system and our labor unions, et cetera. The governor of Delaware was here last month. This is being looked upon across the country, and people say, they would, how the hell are you getting, how the hell did you work this out? And, you know, our point was a three-legged stool, that you had the administration, you work with the teachers' labor unions, and then you work with the student, and the community, family. And it is, I mean, when you, when you're going into those schools, and we always strive to do better, but you can sense the camaraderie and you can sense the improvement that is being made, not only with students but the interaction with families. So, you know, little by little, it's coming to fruition. But again, Springfield's being used as an example.
You know, with really nice student growth percentile gains in ELA and some of our middle schools and some of our empowerment zone schools that were very encouraging, although we know we have more work to do. We received an early grades literacy grant for $74,700. I put a little flyer in your packet on that to improve our intervention programs, and in your packet, you also have a contracts report for September to review and call Pat Rochari if you have any questions. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Any questions, Superintendent Warwick's report? And again, another first with Cassandra Velez being the school representative from Doug and Academy, which is in the envelope, so... Cassandra, let's see that, let's see that wave again.
And she's going to autograph, we have Cassandra, we have one autograph to sign it.
And that was very heartfelt, which you're having family members in Puerto Rico, and we appreciate that perspective from a student. We've had some outstanding student representatives. If there's no other questions of Superintendent Warwick, any unfinished business, say any new business? Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Collins, or second, second by Ms. Gresham. All those in favor say aye, those opposed, the ayes have it. Good evening and thank you for watching.